Another episode of No Stop Lights, another hoodie, my Ginkcock hoodie, butlers. A kind of a high end hoodie today. Anyway, want to thank Pepsi and Florence, our sponsors, and I can't do this enough. Pepsi and Florence, Carolina Bank, Mickey Fens, Marlboro PD Electric Co-op, Francis Marion University, McLeod Health, McCall Farms, Victor's PLC Commercial. It's almost like I need one of these names per sheet to talk about all the contributions they make to our local economy. And I guess we're part of the local economy as we, as we're no longer an extension of Wake Up Carolina, but rather a standalone podcast, No Stop Lights, kind of a play on my hometown. I'm a college dropout from a town with no stoplights. That was about the best line I had when I ran for office, other than being Libyard's father. But anyway, want to thank our sponsors and I mean that sincerely. We've given you fair warning that we're less about Trump, less about Biden, less about national politics, more about a focus on the region, the community, the county government, the city government, the school board. We're really going to try to be very strategic in talking about some of the issues and subjects, some of the personalities that have a lot to do with local politics, regional politics. I mean, I could talk to a fence post, so I could do a podcast twice a week by myself, but I think it's much more interesting and engaging and offers more value to our sponsors here when we have some of the, dare I say movers and shakers of the good old PD region of South Carolina. Next guest is, is a good friend of mine, but he's become a good friend of mine because of a relationship I had with his father. William Schofield just got elected chairman of Florence County Council. When William got elected, and he told me, I mean, full disclosure, he told me a couple of months ago, William, that you thought you had the votes?
I did.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
And I said, well, keep your mouth shut, because if you think you got them,
Get one more.
Yeah, there you go. Get them all. Get every one of them. But William's father, James Schofield, and I want to say this with perfect clarity. I am a former politician. 99.99999% of the people I served with were politicians. James Schofield was a public servant. And I think he instilled in William the heart of a public servant. It's not about you. It's not about the bright lights. It's not about what can I do next to make myself more important. James Schofield was truly, truly a public servant. And James passed away, how many years ago?
It was July 2020.
Okay, four years ago, tragically, and the community lost a public servant when James passed away. William is smitten with politics. I guess like father, like son.
Wasn't before.
Well, I mean, you weren't. I mean, you're right. And we'll get to your story here in just a couple of minutes. But William, because of the recent election as chairman of county council, I thought it very appropriate as we head off into 2024 to find out what the priorities of chairman of Florence County Council. But I want to go back before we do that, William, if you don't mind. How, I mean, I know the answer to this, but I want to hear it in your words. How impactful was your father in your deciding to get into politics?
Sure. I grew up with it. I mean, when he was in city council, I was a small child and my fondest memories of that, at that age, were riding on a city fire truck in the Christmas parade, tossing candy to the other kids. I thought that was just the highest thing that I could have ever done as a child, that I was riding on top of a fire truck. I thought it was so cool. Then later in life, it became a little different for me. The politics and business will pull you away from your family. There is no, I don't think success is the right word, but nothing changes if nothing changes. It would probably be better if you're not moving to get those things done. Families are going to sacrifice a little bit. Politics is tough on a family. For me, it very much so was. I didn't have my father in my life as much as I wanted. And so I began to regret politics growing up. I didn't like it because I knew it pulled me away from him. You know, he went to zero soccer games, zero baseball games, zero football games with me that I was on the team. And you know, that made me a little regret there for a little period in my life. And you know, I let him know it when I got back out the Navy. I mean, I finally got the cojones enough to tell my father, I mean, you let me down a little bit. And I know what you did for everybody was the right call. Now, I do know that, but you need to understand that, how I felt. So entering into this was very conflicting for me because I needed to make sure that I did not pull myself away from my family and my business and who I already am, because I'm a different person than my father. But as Roger Poston's like to say, you're as close as we're going to get.
But your dad, and I mean, family businesses and father-son dynamics, I'll say this, a family business complicated enough. Father-son dynamics are complicated enough. I lived both of those, just like you have.
Yeah.
And it cuts both ways. It's the best of times, it's the worst of times. But when did you understand that your dad was not an absentee father, but rather somebody who was committed to public service?
Probably right when I joined the Navy. And that was a wake-up point for me when I joined.
Why'd you join the Navy?
Well, let's see, I graduated Camden Military Academy. I then went to the Citadel that about a year and a half.
Goofed around.
Goofed around after a year and a half there. And I somehow had the cojones enough, again, that good word, to realize that I was not ready for college. And I called him and I said, listen, I said, I'm doing nothing, but I'm gonna dig myself a grave here. I need to find something to do that's going to be proactive, but also beneficial to me. And I think going in the Navy is probably that route to help me mature a little more, dare I say, and to be able to see things and do things, because that's what I really wanted to do after being stuck in an all-male military boarding school from eighth grade to my senior year. And you know, Camden's a great place. I was a legacy there because both he and his brother went to Carlisle, which is the brother school of it. But that kind of traps you down into a little certain environment. You don't experience things. And then when you get to college, it's like, woo, let's go. Especially after recognition day at the Citadel. And now you're friends with everybody, all the upperclassmen. And it's like, I want to hang out with you. I want to hang out with you. I want to hang out with you. And you know, there's just, there was no time for all of that. You had to set a schedule and be able to hold to it. And you know, there was one thing I always excelled at at Camden and at the Citadel, it was the military aspect. So I felt that that was going to be the right path for me to go. And when I, when I, before I left, I mean, I talked to him about being in politics and stuff, but, and how he dedicated his life to ensuring that this area was taken care of. And I always told him, I said, why didn't you run for the senator or the governor or something like that? You could do this. And he said, I am more effective right here than I would ever be in the Senate.
The Navy turned you into the man that your father felt he could trust business with.
Right.
And politics with. Somebody told me some of these conversations. I mean, I'll not talk about, well, you and I have had conversations about the conversations we had.
Of course, he preferred me clean shaven.
I mean, yeah, you know, he did fuss about the hair and the beard, but other than that, he was very proud of you. And you, and you know that. At the end of his life, you knew how proud your father was.
Most definitely.
Of the man you'd become. So your dad was extremely, not just committed to public service, committed and attentive to detail.
Right.
I always joke with James. James and my relationship was more like, James thawed everything out, and I had to go drum up the votes. He took two hours to watch 60 Minutes. He'd take a stack, I mean.
If you read it once, he read it five times.
No doubt about it. If you understood it, he understood it 10 times, 10 times over. How much did that dedication, understanding of the detail, help you when you decided to become, dare I say, a politician?
Well, you know, Ken, I've told you this story before. I mean, this is the last day he was alive. We had, we had that whole conversation. You know, the year before, I was telling him, I'm gonna run for the school board. I can't put up with it anymore. I was getting frustrated with Florence. I was really, it was getting under my skin bad with the way things were happening, both on the city level and in the schools. And you know, this is before Rich, this is before our new county, our city council and things. And I was just determined that I was going to be a part of the change to fix it. And that my children and my friends' children and every citizen in this county deserved better than what they were getting. And I was gonna, I'll be damned, I was gonna be, I was gonna be the cause of it, to push forward and pick up where he left off. But you know, he told me that day, he said, don't you run for that seat. You go ask such and such. You run for my county seat. You don't want to do that school board. You go run for my county seat. And I said, well, you know such and such is gonna run. He said, yeah, I know, but you'll beat him. Well, we all know how that went. I did not beat him.
Go back to that race. That race was what district, what seat, and who'd you run against?
That was District 8. That's the first time I ran against Buddy Brand. You know, I'm grieving the loss of my father. We've got two weeks from the day he died to the day of the special election. In the heat of COVID, can't go door to door. All you can do is try and make phone calls and make social media posts. And you know, I worked real hard. I didn't stop. And thankfully, I have the right business people in place at my business to be able to carry that while I did that every single day. And we got close, but it wasn't close enough. It wasn't 51%. But it lit a fire in me, Ken, it really did. And then come January, you know, the mayor's won Wakila's old seat. So her seat is now vacant. It's District One. And I was like, I'm sitting there laying in the bed, and my wife looks over at me and she goes, oh God, you can run for it. So with your support, I will. She's, do it. Do it. I remember going into, I don't know if I can say a restaurant name, but it was a.
A short U King.
Sure. I went into Basin's a morning after that, after I announced that I was going to run for District One on City Council. And Buddy and someone else were sitting at one of the tables. And I went up and I congratulated him, talked to him. And I mean, political races aren't where you create enemies. They're where you create bonds. They really are. The, and I, you know, I was sitting there talking to him, and he goes, William, I told you to run for a seat, but I didn't mean that one. I meant for you to continue to run and stay in this, that you're good at it, but I did not mean that. And you know, lo and behold, here comes William. And I think it was 53% of the vote and wins District One, the first Republican to win it. And I mean, that, that felt really good. I was very emotional that night. I think I cried for a few hours.
But I want people to understand with clarity, the first time you ran for county council, that was your dad's seat.
Correct.
Your dad died as a sitting member of Florence County Council.
I wanted to finish his term. That's all I wanted to do.
And I remember going to see you. I mean, once again, some of these private conversations will be made public.
Sure.
I went to see you and tried to convince you to not do it.
You did.
I mean, I said, let's slow down a bit. Let's, you know, let's, let's think about what was to come, because I knew the emotion. And I knew the, I know how the son of a very consequential father feels in trying to measure up. I mean, I've lived that. You've lived a lot of that. And that's, that's not politics. That's that father-son dynamic. I remember going to see you and I said, William, let's, let's slow down a bit. I mean, let's not do this. But you were hell bent, and I mean that in the most positive way, to not allow someone to tell you to go slower. Because you felt, and I'm, I'm on.
Go for it.
Well, I mean, you led me to believe that you felt part of the problem in Florence's lack of growth, where we'd got a little bit lackadaisical. We weren't charging to heal as hard as we needed. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but when I left that meeting that day, I was convinced. And I thought about it. I said, who am I to tell him to slow down? Because you felt we had failed to keep up with the rest of the state because we'd gone too slow. Is that fair?
That's pretty fair. I mean, I just felt like we'd gotten complacent. And I mean, again, if nothing changes, nothing changes. So I mean, why not run for District One on City Council? What, because it's never been done? There's one, there's one word that even my father would tell you, whether good or bad, that William does not know. I do not take the word no. I figure out a way. I always have.
Well, you get on.
I've got, I've got to be able to figure out a way.
Well, you get that from your father. Okay, you're a little less diplomatic than he is, and I respect that. I'm not anywhere near diplomatic as your dad was.
Not many are.
You get to, you get to Florence City Council. What were the, the issues that you wanted to tackle and address? I know LED lights were a big, were a big deal. Walk me through what, what, what you felt needed to be accomplished as a member of City Council.
Well, there was a lot that I wanted to see accomplished. But I knew initially, I only had that year and a half and some change to get anything done. So I had to go after quick, quick grab items to really get some things done in the time that I was there, because there's no guarantee that I'd win reelection for that seat, much less that I was gonna run. Didn't know I was gonna run for District Eight on County Council at that time. So you know, we went after LED streetlights.
Why was that important, William? Why was that important to you?
Well, number one, we were sitting here with high-pressure sodium orange glow bulbs, looking like we were back in 1980. And when you're driving down the interstate and you go down some of these nicer newer cities, you saw this bright, clear look. It felt updated. It felt clean. It felt safe and secure. You got to think about where you, when you're driving down the road, where are you going to stop? You're going to stop in a place that's not well lit? Are you going to stop in a place that is well lit? I'm gonna stop in a place that's well lit so that I can keep an eye on my surroundings while I'm pumping gas or taking my family inside of a restaurant to grab a quick eat while we're on our road trip. And you know, even inside of our neighborhoods, I mean, there are people that what we call walkers. They walk. And they don't belong in the neighborhood. But that way, now you can clearly identify with the correct color LED bulb in there, what color shirt they're wearing, what color pants they're wearing. Did they have colored tennis shoes on? Was there a hat? What color was it? Vice versa. You can more clearly identify things to the dispatch in order to get a more accurate description to law enforcement.
How many lights did we change out?
Oh, good Lord.
I mean, do we know?
Yeah, we did. And what? I used to know that number, and I could look it up on my phone, but it'd take me a minute because I posted it on our Facebook, on my Facebook page.
The taxpayer would be more interested in what the estimated cost savings were?
It was next to nothing. It really was. The savings as far as per, you know, as wattage per use, you know, that's a different rate compared to a residential rate. You're not going to save on that.
It was a safety issue with you.
It was a safety issue, and it was a maintenance issue. When you go to replace a high pressure, and I learned this from the hardware in the shopping center, you know, we had high-pressure sodium bulbs up. But when you go to change a light on a light pole up there, all right, so you now have a guy, you're paying the guy, you have the boom truck, got to keep the maintenance on the boom truck. Now you've got, once you get up there, you're not just going up there to change the bulb, you're going up there to change the bulb, you're gonna change the socket, you're gonna change the ballast. You're gonna change all those things at once, whether they're good or bad, because you don't want to go back up there for that to fail next.
While we got the boom truck, let's do it all.
So, I mean, and I still, like, if I see an issue with a light today, I'll pick up my phone and I'll report it to Duke. And I think I've only had to do that three times with these LEDs, whereas before I was doing it, you know, almost weekly, reporting out light outages on the streets. And I mean, I wish I could get an answer from Duke, how much their maintenance has come down. But I'm sure it's substantial.
Let's, okay, we leave City Council. You and Buddy Brand have been competitors of one another for seems like
Three years.
The last 10 years. And I think you've maintained a good friendship.
Yeah.
With Buddy. Buddy's a fine man, and Buddy did a yeoman's work.
Yes, he did.
For the city and county of Florence. You get elected to Florence County Council. That's kind of sort of where you wanted to be anyway.
It was. Ken, originally, you know, you got back to, we'll back it up a little bit. And you're asking me how I got into politics. I originally only wanted to finish my dad's term. And once I got elected as City Council and realized how impactful I could actually be, I fell in love with, with serving even further. I mean, it was like being in the military 2.0 for me. I mean, I'm married and have four kids now. I can't, I can't go.
You saw things happen that you had a hand in.
Correct. I can't, I can't go, go sign up. I mean, I could go sign up again and go back in, but I wouldn't want to do that to my kids and my wife. So this was a way for me to be able to continue my service to the community. I couldn't do it to the nation anymore, but I could still help people right here. And that, and that resonated with me. And it's just, it carried me through to want to keep pushing.
Okay, a lot.
And I felt when I, to run for county, I felt that I could help even more because that's, that's a bigger platform. Not only can I help the city residents, now, now I can help the county residents.
When you ran against Buddy the second time for county council.
Correct.
Your motto, your campaign theme basically was, hey, I like all these guys, but we need new blood. I mean, it's our time. This is time for us to write our chapter in the history of Florence County. Is that fair?
Sure, that's fair. I wouldn't necessarily say it was a slogan, but it was definitely a momentum factor for the people that were voting for me. I mean, they're, a large portion of people that did vote for me were, you know, people my age and younger, people that normally don't come out and vote. And they came out, and they came out in good numbers. There's still, you know, people that are my father's age, my mother's age, and your age that voted for me as well, because they all believe in me as well. They know that I'm, that I have their best interests at heart. You know, the City of Florence Police Department, you know, they now know that somebody cares about them. You know, I can't shed more light on public service people than anything. Fire, police, and EMS, they all know that the number, my number one concern, besides the city residents and the county residents, is them. Making sure they have the tools to do what they need to get their job done, which protect the citizens, which is the ultimate goal.
This is a little bit controversial. I mean, I served on county council with your father. The nature of politics in America, it's not just Florence, it's not just South Carolina, but the nature of politics in America is, aren't you young bucks? Slow down and wait your turn. You didn't like that. I mean, you didn't believe in that. You didn't describe to that theory. You felt that if things needed to be done, it didn't matter how long you'd been there, let's get it done.
No, you and a few others sat me down before that race again and said, William, you got a 50, 50% chance at that. And in four more years, you've got almost 100% chance of winning that. And I just nodded my head and I walked out.
Well, I left there and said, we, you know, excuse my French, we're pissing in the wind. He's made his mind up. He's gonna run, and he's gonna run no matter, no matter who tells him what. But, but.
Could I've run for City Council again and won? Sure. Ultimate end goal, serve and help as many people as I can. And I can do it far better from the county position. I darned, I didn't even have an inclination that I was gonna be running for chairman in my first year.
And that's why I got you here. You're the chairman of Florence County Council. You got elected in?
January 18th. Oh, you're talking about for chairman?
What year? No, 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 no. What year did you get elected to Florence County Council?
Florence County Council, January 2023.
Okay, it is January 2024, right?
Correct.
You see where I'm headed.
I do.
I mean, historically, we kind of waited our turn. That's been the nature of politics in America. I think that's what's got us in effect. I mean, I really believe that we've told the younger, more energetic people to sit tight. Your turn will be here sooner than later. I don't think you meant to offend anybody.
Not a sound.
I don't think you meant to step on anybody's toes.
Never.
I just think you felt that you had something to offer to that county or to that council, and you could lead.
Sure.
What, what do you want to lead toward? Well, what do you see in Florence County's future that William Schofield really wants to amplify, to attack, to go after, to make, to make happen?
Well, I mean, I think those guys, every single one of them, you know, I said it the day that I got elected for chairman, we've got the best council in the state. I really truly believe that. We've got the best council in the state. That the passion that each of us have for our districts in this county, it's unmatched. And I think they recognize a sword of enthusiasm and passion and dedication that they saw in another late council member. And they wanted to see if that was gonna ring true. I mean, I feel, I feel that, you know, our main focus needs to be the people, plain and simple. I ran on a public campaign as far as for, you know, things for people to do. What are these families gonna do? We're gonna bring all these industries here, and I'm grateful. We can't do anything without expanding the tax base. We cannot grow without it. I cannot provide any more services and provide any more equipment to the sheriff, to the firefighters or EMS without more tax growth. I mean, that's, you got to stay net neutral, okay? And the biggest thing that we've got to do right now is figure out how to proactively and responsibly grow. So a big thing for me right now, not only is the public, the public safety side, in getting all of them exactly what they need, whether that's pay or equipment, but proper, responsible growth. And that takes zoning. And that was something my father started down, and everybody was a little scared to do it back then.
He was a pain in the ass about that.
I think you, you were a part of that when he wanted to do that, and y'all told him, no, no, no. And you know.
He didn't have as many farmers voting for him as I did.
No, he didn't. But I'm, but you know, with responsible zoning, it doesn't affect anyone. And it can do great things. With none, you could end up with, dare you say, a strip club next door to you, or a bar, or an oil change place right there in your residential neighborhood, and there's not a thing that anybody can do about it because it's unzoned. So if we do responsible zoning and start this, you know, especially down 76 and 327, I mean, that's really where we're about to take off as far as growth. You've pushed as far as you can on the west side. You're at the edge of the Darlington Line. There's nowhere else you can go, you know? So it's time to start pushing east and south and have responsible growth over there. But in order to ensure that it's responsible, you got to zone it. All these little outlined little areas are going to have to be zoned eventually. And you know, you got to talk about things that a lot of people aren't going to understand. They're gonna, what's a setback? Well, do you want them 10 feet off the street? Do you want them 30 feet off the street? How far on each road do you want development off the street? That's something you're familiar with. I mean, you called me not long ago on some, some houses that were going up, that, hey, I need help. And I'm, okay, well, let's see what we can get done. By the way, those houses turned out gorgeous.
Well, I mean, it's smart, responsible growth.
Correct. And you know, you're going down 327, the, it's a blank canvas. That is a blank canvas. So the Post and Courier interviewed me on Friday. I pulled up an article out of a box. I have a box in my office full of stuff of my father's and mine, that little trinkets and things that he kept over the years, some different political things that he was involved in. And I pulled it out and it was Florence Mall, I-95, I-20. The only thing there was this one little, small, little piece of the mall. And the rest was grass and fields and forest. And you had the cows roaming over here by GE. And I said, that's, that's I-95 and I-20. I showed it to him, and he was like, really? I said, yeah. I said, without responsible zoning over here, this could have really turned out bad. I said, but Columbia and other, other cities all have multiple different big spots in their cities. And Florence is no different. Florence is at the top of the roller coaster about to take off at full speed. And we've got to make sure that, that we take care of everybody before that launches.
Let's, you talked about responsible growth. One thing that I remember in my days was you had to have affordable, reliable energy.
Sure.
You had to have the critical infrastructure.
Yep.
Water was a big part of that. As a member of county council, we were always at the mercy of the city. I'm going to be very candid. I have concerns.
Oh, so do I.
About the city's water, the state of the city's water department.
So do I.
And it not being able to accommodate the sort of growth that we need. Do you share that concern?
100%. And it's because previous, let me stress that, previous city councils and administrations focused on other things besides the water infrastructure. Great, we're sitting right here and smack dab in a nice new downtown. But we might should have been focusing on the quality of our water system and the wells and the pipes, and being able to grow it a little further without adding more surface water plants. I mean, surface water's great, but the surface water plant we have now, you know, it contributes up to 30% of the water in, inside the, for the city. But all of that goes to Niagara. It doesn't help the residents where you live, the people that work over there. Now, I've still got brown, nasty, rusty water with clogs and everything else. So I have to put a filter on my house just to keep my clothes and bed sheets and linens from getting damaged. And other people are very upset about that because, you know, if you don't, if we don't set our, set this up for future generations, they're doomed. They're going to be dealing with this in such a way that it will almost become irreparable. We will literally have to dig everything all new instead of just, what I, what I would like to see is us to actually reline those pipes. It's possible. There's a local company here that does that stuff.
Does the county, should the county consider getting the water a bit? And the penny tax, I mean, we've done a lot. Your father was very instrumental in the penny tax. And I'm talking about fire and rescue, and I'm talking about first responders.
Sure.
And a lot of cool things we're doing, a lot of, a lot of roads.
What, what should the county do as far as the water system? 100% we should stay involved in it. If we don't stay involved in, in.
Involved in what way, William? I mean, let's be a little more, I mean, I know we don't have an ironclad plan.
I'm, I'm gonna get there with you. Right now, sitting before the Justice and Public Safety Committee on County Council, is something from the fire district, from the Unified Fire District, which my father helped, helped do. And a lot of people fought him on that. Some very powerful people fought him on that. But they won, okay? And we have a UFD now, and. And those chiefs brought forward, you know, that they wanted to replace some fire hydrants and put new fire hydrants in. And, you know, they wanted to help the City of Florence get some fire trucks because, again, those previous councils failed to get the City of Florence some fire trucks that are well-needed. And, and that's to no fault of the current City Council. I can't stress that enough. Those guys, I've already informed them of all that.
They ain't here to the mess.
They've, they got their hands full. And I, you know, it doesn't matter if you live in Lake City, City of Florence, if you live in outlying sides outside of Florence, you're a Florence County resident. You're a Florence County citizen. And my job as chairman or just even a council member is to take care of you and make sure that you are well-protected. And that includes inside the city limits to me. I mean, not, not just because it's my district, but yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you know that, you know, the county is 140,000 people, but in 29501, 505, and 506 are 93,000 people. And the City of Florence applies more mutual aid to the county than the county replies to the city. So, you know, we've got fire trucks in the county that need to be replaced, and we have to be able to figure out how to do that too. So I understand both sides of this coin. But, and the City of Florence is gonna have to step up to that. They're gonna have to step up to the plate. They've got no choice.
All right, let, let, let's make a deal. I don't wanna be dealmaker here.
Let me, let me-
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Continue.
So, you know, those are sitting there before the county right now. And I, I fully believe we ought to invest into the fire hydrants, okay? I don't necessarily, I mean, I'm, I'm for helping the City of Florence with a fire truck if we can. But my primary concern would first be those fire hydrants. And I wouldn't wait for the City of Florence to install those fire hydrants. I would hire an outside contractor, not related to the county or the city, that was maybe a local contractor, if possible, if, if they bid it right. Preferably, I would hope it would be a local contractor, but to an outside, outside agency to install those for us, so we don't have to wait.
And who pays for it?
Us, the county residents. We already are. I mean, that comes out of, of, of the penny tax and other things like that.
Well, I'd, I'd stay with the penny tax because here's where I think there's some potential working together between city and county. They have a tremendous issue with water. You have the, the ability to ask the public for another penny that goes, I think it sunsets in seven years, raises what, 150 or 60 or 70 million dollars? Is there a deal to be made? Would the county be interested? You can't speak for the council, and I respect that.
I'm one of none.
But, but, but you're one of nine. You're an important one of nine now that you've been elected chairman. Is there any interest in the county offering up a certain amount of money to help the city with the issue relating to water if there was better treatment of county residents? I'm talking about tap fees and, and, and rates and whatnot. Is, is there a deal to be made? I mean, I'm not on council, William, but if I were, I mean, that, that would be the road I would start going down. I don't believe the city treats county residents fairly when it comes to the rates nor the tap fees.
This discussion's already being had between myself and a few other on City Council, okay? I'm not gonna call them out.
Sure.
All right? We pay more in the county for a county resident than a city resident. Tap fees are higher, and they use it as an annexation tool to sway you to come in. But water is a need. It's not a want. That's basic infrastructure. Utility company can't charge this person and then their neighbor a different rate, and they're both residences. In my minds, it's flat-out illegal. It may not be, but in my eyes, it's flat-out illegal. There are discussions, okay, that I've been having that to equalize the rates between the city and the county residents as a show of good faith in order for the good faith to be able to come from the County Council and do the same to help them move things forward. But if the county's not being treated fairly, that council, my council that I serve with, they're never gonna get behind it if their, if their residents aren't treated fairly and equally. So if they can treat us equally with the water system, I can see the county backing and helping fix the water system. But they've gotta wanna ask for the help, okay? You know, that was one thing my father said after the, we had that, that, the big flood. I don't remember what year was that. Was that 2017?
Yep.
And the surface water plant, its pump went underwater. Can't run it underwater. And the county had everything they needed to fix it to be able to do it. But the city at that time didn't want their help because of pre-existing relations. I think we've got the best shot at fixing our infrastructure together than we've ever had. I think, you know-
You want a far-fetched dream, Ken?
Far-fetched dream would that it would be that every, every single water utility in Florence County was all connected together and maintaining pressure with each other, and it was all one service.
Well, I mean, I think that's the way you secure the chance to have economic growth. You're talking about growth. Growth creates a, a higher ad valorem tax. And, and once you do that, you can spread the, the burden around, and you don't have to specifically target, you know, one sector of the economy or, or another. Okay, you, you, you've covered water about as well as we possibly could. What else does Chairman Schofield hope to accomplish in his year as chairman of Florence County Council?
Again, here, here we are, just, you know, no different. When I was on City Council for a year and a half, I've, I've got to line my priorities up of what can I get done quick to, to help? I mean, it's, the biggest thing for me right now is to be that voice, to be the transparent voice. And that, that's my primary objective right now. For, for many reasons. Many people, both city residents, county residents, council members, have all felt that they just weren't being communicated with. And they weren't being represented like they probably should've been. And so I felt that I could be a little more transparent with it. Yeah, sometimes I don't come across as I probably should. I am not my father. I'll never say that I am. But I want to be able to focus on doing the right thing proactively, okay? Whether it's with infrastructure, whether it's with public safety or economic development, we've got to be able to do it in the right manner, through the right channels. And, but at the same time, the public and the councils have to be able to feel that they are included in it. Not just the council, but the public. Because we're put there by them. What I want doesn't matter. Yeah, there's hopes and dreams, but what's really got to get done is what we want for Florence County as a whole. What do we want? Do we want more recreation for these families, for these businesses that are coming? Do we want new entertainment options? Do we want bigger parks? Do we want more parks? Do we want better roads? Do we want better water? We've gotta create a priority list. And, you know, that's, that's, that's a hard thing to do as far as, you know, involving the entire county into doing that. I don't exactly know how to do it just yet. But it's probably gonna just take one large, you know, public forum to allow them to just sit there and tell me. Just tell me.
That's kinda what we do with the penny tax.
Yeah.
I mean, you travel around the county and figure out what everybody considers.
What is, what is it that you want? With the last penny tax, what did Johnsonville want? They wanted a golf course. They've got a golf, that's a premier golf course. It's beautiful. Played it. It's awesome. Very long, a very long course. But, you know, is that the direction that Florence wants to go again with another penny tax? Or does Florence want more recreation opportunities? Does Florence want more parks? Does Florence want us to solely focus on water? Do you want us to focus just on roads? Because that's all the City of Florence has ever done.
Do we take advantage of being at the convergence of two major interstates as well as we should?
So, no. And yes. We are a logistics town. You know it. I know it. Anyone that comes through this town and hears that choo-choo train go knows we're a logistics town, started by rail. So I-95, I-20, we're, we're the golden T, as Dad used to say. We tee it up for the beach, we tee it up for Miami, we tee it up for New York. We are a logistics hub with I-95 and I-20 and the rail and the airport. You know, so I feel that we focus more on that, and then the others will follow. No different now at the airport. I, you know, I don't fly out of there near as much as I probably should, but that's because I can't get back to Florence on the right time when the flights come back. It always gets later canceled. Then I'm stuck in Charlotte. You know, I'd like to put a little more focus at the, at the airport as far as logistics and, and doing more commercial shipping through the airport. We have, we have the airport size to do it. You know, I wanna, I wanna fix that corridor. You ask me one, one thing that I would want to do? I'd wanna clean up right there in front of the airport. I wanna turn it into something that is beautiful and that we can be proud of when our family and friends come in and fly in and, and come see us. I don't wanna have to turn right out the airport, go to 327 and take 95 South to come in at David H. McLeod. I wanna be able to come straight in. I wanna be able to, to add more parks and, and start thinking about the mere fact that we're about to grow so rapidly that we have to start thinking like Theodore Roosevelt. Unless we wanna be an asphalt concrete paradise, we've got to start preserving land.